Good evening. Welcome to the Lee County Board of Commissioners' November 5th meeting. It's hard to believe it's already November. And I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Doc Odom if he would lead us with the invocation and the pledge.
This time, I'd like to call Reverend Russ Ward to the podium to do the invocation for us.
Let's bow together as we pray. Almighty eternal God, we thank you that you love us, that you love this little part of our beautiful world with all its problems. We thank you for these able men and women who must represent so many different people with so many different opinions. We ask that you will make them equal to the tasks you place before them and to the trust we have placed in them, that in the face of things that divide us, they may be a model of how to work together for the good of us all. When they need to disagree with one another, grant that they may disagree agreeably and with mutual respect. In the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Let's raise our hands to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much Reverend Ward for that. Appreciate that prayer. At this time, I'd like to ask for any additional items to the agenda? Then moving on to the approval of consent agenda, is there a motion?
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Right, okay, yes, we need to approve the agenda as proposed first, I'm sorry.
Move that we approve the agenda as stated.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, now we'll move with Doc's.
Okay, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Sorry about that. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we'll move into the public hearings. Tonight, we're having the public hearing regarding the proposed Lee County 2019 Schedule of Values and the 2019 Present Use Value Schedule. And I'd like to ask Mr. Michael Brown if he'd come and lead us into the public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Darrell, other county commissioners. Appreciate the time before you tonight. We come before you as the second part of the three-part process for adopting the Schedule of Values for the upcoming 2019 reappraisal. October 15th, we had our presentation where we presented the Schedule of Values to you. Tonight, have the public hearing and at this time, we'd like to move forward with that.
Okay, all right. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. I'll do that with my right hand. Is there anyone that would like to come and speak for the proposed Schedule of Values? Now, Ms. Parrish, can we do both together? The Schedule of Values and the Present Use Value Schedule, I mean it's...
I think so.
Yes, advertised.
Okay, all right, that was my clarification question, thank you. Okay, anyone like to speak for? Anyone like to speak against? Okay, we'll close that public hearing, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody from our tax office for your hard work, and we'll just move forward. Okay, now, we would like to get into the next item with proclamations. The first one is our Farm City Week proclamation. I'd like to call on Dr. Bill Stone for that, welcome. You were just here for this, like a couple of months ago.
Yes ma'am, it's time again. I guess it's been about a year, which is funny, I don't feel a year older.
No.
As such it is, but thank you for having us, Madam Chair and county commissioners. It is that time of year again, harvest season, where we celebrate the rural and urban partnership for Farm City Week, as many of y'all are familiar with. The leading industry in North Carolina is, of course, agriculture at almost $85 billion, and it's also an important economic driver here locally and also a significant portion of our county's heritage. This year, once again, Farm City Week banquet will be held at the McSwain Center the Monday before Thanksgiving, and we would love to have you join us if you're available. You should have before you a list of events as part of Farm City Week. We normally start the festivities off that night at 5:30 with refreshments, and then the program will start at about 6 o'clock that evening. We have a wonderful speaker this year from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, Annie Baggett, is going to be talking a little bit about agriculture and agri-marketing today and how that's changing across our state, and also talk about some exciting initiatives that will impact us here locally in Lee County with a mobile app that we're looking at launching here soon. At this time, I would like to recognize one of our Lee County 4-Hers, who's currently sophomore at NC State University, Callie Steger, and she informed me when we went up here, again, it's hard to keep track of the time, but this will be Callie's last year in 4-H, she's aging out, and we'll certainly miss her. But Callie is going to join you tonight and speak a little bit about her experiences in 4-H, how agriculture has influenced her personally and also in her career path. So I'll call Callie up at this time.
Thanks.
Hey, Callie, good evening.
Hello. Hi, my name is Callie Steger, and I'm here today to speak with you about the impact of 4-H and Farm City Week and agriculture in general has had on my personal life and also my professional career. So, back in 2010, I attended my first 4-H meeting, and shortly after I attended, I joined 4-H officially. And this provided me opportunities to further, about a year later, I decided to start attending events, district and eventually statewide. And this allowed me to connect with people across not only my region but with my state, so I know, today I can say I know people from the mountains to the coast. And through 4-H, I also began competing in presentation competitions and developed my public speaking skills. And I was also offered many leadership positions. I was able to hold positions ranging from club, county, and district level. And those positions included president, vice president, treasurer, and reporter. One of the most valued positions I held was in 2015, 2016, I was South Central District 4-H reporter, and I worked with three other people, so there's a team of four of us. And in this position, I learned leadership skills, but I also learned how to work within a group setting. It was my first time working on a team, and we were in charge of a lot of events, so it was kind of my first big leadership role. And being active in 4-H meant that I was always meeting with Bill a lot, and I was discussing with him how I could further my 4-H career, is what we call it, and how I could just gain more skills and build upon the skills I had already developed. So, in 2016, that summer, when Bill came to me about a project they were thinking about developing, and offered me a chance to be the videographer for this project, I immediately said yes. So, in 2016, in October, we had our first meeting, and there, we kind of talked about the logistics of our project, and we kind of gave it a name. And I highly underestimated what this project would mean to me in the long run when I first went into this meeting. We called the project "Reshaping the Landscape: Women in Agriculture Impacting Lee County Agriculture", and the mission of this project was to highlight women in agriculture in Lee County and give them an opportunity to share their story. And over the course of the year, we interviewed 12 women, and we compiled those 12 interviews into 10 videos. And starting March of 2017, we released a video every month until November. And by doing these interviews, we were able to showcase the challenges and also the successes of these women in agriculture. And at the Farm City banquet last year, almost a year ago, we were able to premiere our final video of the project, and in this video, we explained about what we had learned, what we experienced, and what we were planning on doing with the project further. This project was kind of centered around Farm City Week. We'd always planned to premiere our final video and the project itself at Farm City Week. And so, Farm to City Week program is such an important program because during this week, we recognize our food producers within our county every year. And as we got further into this program, we began to talk more and more to women and hear their stories. I started to realize I have a passion in agriculture, and I wanted to help these farmers face the problems they were dealing with and help them come up with a solution and kind of end their troubles. So, by the end of my senior year, 2016, I decided I was going to pursue a degree in crop science. So, as Bill said, I'm currently an NC State student sophomore studying crop science with a concentration in crop production, and I am enjoying my agriculture classes greatly. I actually just got back yesterday from a conference in Kansas City called Agriculture Future of America, and this is a huge conference. There were over 800 students ranging from freshman to senior, all from over 300 different schools around the country. So this was a very good event. I was able to network and talk to people my age but also older and younger than me that were, we all had the same interest of agriculture. And it was a really exciting opportunity, and let me tell you, the future of agriculture is very bright, and it was very inspiring to see so many bright and eager students there pursuing my same passions. Being a part of 4-H and being a part of the Women in Agriculture project has made such a huge impact on my life and has led me to many successes. Programs like 4-H, FFA, and Farm to City Week program are so vital in educating the next generation on the importance of agriculture. There is not a single person I met over the weekend that wasn't either a member of 4-H, FFA, or both. And they all told me how these programs impacted them to continue their journey with 4-H into their professional careers. We have to remember that without farmers, we don't have food, and we can't eat, and we can't survive. And it's such a simple message, but it's so often overlooked. Thank you again for your time and letting me share my story with you.
Thanks, Callie. Thank you. So, yes, Farm City Week coming up, and the banquet on the 19th. I'm sure folks contact the Cooperative Extension Office, they can find out more information about tickets. And we also have the ladies' luncheon on December 5th that's coming up as well. So, good reporting there, Callie, and nice that you had such a good experience out in Kansas City. Okay, our next item...
Do you need a lunch at the front?
Yes. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the 2018 Farm City proclamation as stated and presented in the agenda.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
I just have one comment. Over the years, I've seen a bunch of these youngsters come through, they all seem to be well-prepared and really enjoy the program they participate in. I think it's a real asset for this county.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, and more good news, our next item, our next proclamation is the 100th Anniversary of Armistice Day, which will be on November 11th. And I have a proclamation that I will read, and then we have a special guest here that I'll call upon to come up and give us a little bit more information. The proclamation to consider tonight, whereas a century ago, 4.7 million American families sent their sons and daughters off to World War I, including more than 87,000 North Carolinians, and whereas the resource of our entire nation, resources of our entire nation were brought to bear on the war effort that was to be the war to end all wars, and whereas 116,516 Americans gave their lives in the war, including 629 Tar Heels that were killed in action, 204 that perished from battle wounds, and 1,542 that succumbed to disease, and whereas an additional 200,000 Americans were physically wounded in World War I, including more than 3,600 that returned to North Carolina, and countless others that suffered for the rest of their lives from mental scars and combat trauma. And whereas the tolling of bells is a traditional expression of honor and remembrance for Armistice Day, a day dedicated to the cause of world peace, and whereas in November 2018, the world will commemorate the 100th Anniversary of Armistice that ended the fighting in World War I at 11 o'clock a.m., November the 11th, 1918, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners proclaim November the 11th, 2018, as World War I Remembrance Day in Lee County, North Carolina, and call upon residents to observe this day, the 100th Anniversary of Armistice Day by remembering and honoring veterans of our armed services for their sacrifices and efforts to secure world peace and to protect our country and our freedoms, dated this day, the 5th day of November 2018. Is there a motion?
I look to approve.
Okay, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, and at this time, I'd like to call on Ms. Jane Behringer, if she would come up. She is from our Railroad House Historical Association, and she's so kind to come and share a little bit more information on a special event that's happening based on this celebration.
Well, I want to thank you for doing this. This is a statewide thing. The Railroad House, as a historical group, is kind of taking the lead for here. Perhaps you don't know, we have 300, almost 300 veterans of World War I. It's hard to find them around today, they're all gone, but they are buried in our cemeteries in this county, just in this county, and that's a pretty big number. And we are at the Railroad House having an open house on Sunday from 1 until 4 in commemoration of this event, and we would love to have you all come see the things that have been given to the Railroad House. We have quite a number of things that are artifacts that have been given over the years, and I thank you for what you have done here.
Oh, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? I was excited to hear about this, I mean, this is a huge historical...
It is a statewide thing. Our house in history is sponsoring the bell ringing across the state. So, we used to do this, and we used to remember this a little bit better, but this is the 100th Anniversary, and we thank you all so very much.
Okay, so this Sunday, from 1 to 4, at the Railroad House?
At the Railroad House.
And there'll be a lot of artifacts and exhibits and people to talk to?
There was a nice article in the paper by one of your former own, and we will be featuring the doctor material that we have, and some other things. We have quite a lot of things about it.
Great.
And we hope you will...
Okay. An extra history lesson on Sunday afternoon? That'll be good. Thank you, Ms. Behringer, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have public comments, but we did not have anyone sign up for public comments. So we'll move on into old business, and Item A, you'll find on your agenda on page 32, the consideration of approval of the future land use plan. Marshall?
Good evening.
Hey, Marshall Downey, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you indicated, Madam Chair, this is old business. You may recall that Mr. Montgomery, our senior planner, presented this item to you at your October 15th meeting at a public hearing. This was the second of two public hearings you had on this particular item. As you recall, the first one was right on the heels of the first major storm event we had, and I think the board felt, and staff agreed, that it was best to have two hearings to allow folks to come out and to attend that. The purpose of this tonight is, at the conclusion of your October 15th meeting, the item went to the planning board, which is typical when you're thinking about plans being considered, just like you would your rezoning cases. And I would refer you to page 35 of your packet. Essentially, the planning board did recommend that you approve the plan, the draft plan, it was a four-to-one vote. Madam Chair, I can go into detail there. You can see there are six items listed there, but for the sake of time, I wasn't going to go into those, but if you'd like, I can. But essentially, again, it was a four-to-one vote recommending in favor. The overview of that was essentially a lot of the same questions that you all had in terms of, you know, recognizing this is kind of a big public policy document and doesn't get into a lot of detail. There was concerns that they had expressed about some detailed items that we talked about we could address through future meetings and things like that as we get into more micro-level planning. And I'll pause there. I would remind you, I think some of the questions the board had early on from the planning board is the public process. It was a two-year period, we had a series of public meetings, which are documented, again, in both your abstract as well as on the staff report itself. One last thing, I failed to mention that the city of Sanford and the town overall have adopted the draft plan. And I'll pause there if there's any questions.
Madam Chairman, I just want to make it clear to the board that the discussions at the last meeting that the citizens brought up about the overlay district for the airport, the overlay district is not in the land use plan. The discussion about the airport in the land use plan typically, it just, in generalities, talks about protecting the airport property and that the best use, you know, near the airport is industrial and commercial property. So, I met with some of those folks that came to the last meeting, a meeting out at the airport on Thursday night. The airport is in the middle of developing a new master plan. The master plan is required by the FAA for future grant funding, so you have to have a master plan telling the FAA and the State Division of Aviation how you plan on growing your airport in the future before you can get additional grant money for widening the runway or extending runways or doing any other projects where they might give you grant money. So, all of this kind of ran together, you got the land use plan running together, you got their master plan running together, and then they, or we, kind of got out a little head on the overlay district before we probably should have. So, I made that clear to the folks that were there Thursday night, that before we could pass the overlay district, there would have to be a public hearing, they would all get invited to that public hearing, and that the land use plan would not be, you know, did not contain that or any zoning changes. They were all so concerned about if we were going to do any zoning changes, which I told them, you know, there were not zoning changes in the land use plan. That being said, I also told them that we were not going to pass the land use plan tonight. I did not think the board was ready to do that, that they may have questions tonight, and that we would probably, you know, at the earliest, it would be the 19th that we would consider adopting the land use plan. So, I wanted to explain that, I think it kind of got confusing at the last meeting, and I know there were some citizens that have contacted board members about the overlay district, and Marshall, Whitney and I have talked quite a bit about the overlay district and specifically trying to address the five-acre issue with, you know, a single house and maybe try to identify the people who want to take some acreage and give it to their grandchildren or their children or whatever and build a house. Maybe we could come up with a small subdivision rule or something like that that would appease those folks, but...
But that would be part of the unified development order.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I was going...
And that would be part of those discussions that would be ongoing. And if you remember that, not only do we have the airport overlay district to discuss with the UDO, but there are things with oil and gas exploration and mining and quarry operations that, you know, we have been discussing with the board that we would bring up after the land use plan was adopted. So, we plan on having many discussions with the board going forward about land use through the UDO after the land use plan is adopted.
Any questions or concerns? Comments for Marshall?
I would simply echo 100% agree. I mean, it's probably just bad timing with the airport overlay, it got very confusing.
Sure.
Kind of like being what it was, we would have delayed that and not brought that forward.
Sometimes it's a good problem to have, though, to have a lot going on at the same time. It's nice to be busy, but sometimes things do kind of overlap, maybe, you know...
Sometimes you try to get out ahead, and it doesn't exactly work out absolutely well.
Well, the greater concern is allowing the public time to digest what it is you're proposing. Even to this very moment, I understand the need for the airport's protection and expansion from time to time, but I also understand the ownership of those who've been out there for years and years and years. So, to try and rush these two things or put them together is not wise at all. It's not good for the public.
Well, and, you know, we've had a lot of discussions on this, and I think, you know, with the timing, I think a lot of our citizens have been interested in maybe more political issues and that kind of thing than land use plans. And that's kind of why I mentioned to the manager that maybe we needed to wait, you know, a little bit longer before we vote on this, and make sure, make sure all of us have looked over it one last time and had the opportunity to talk with Marshall and his staff if we have any questions before we move forward. Having said that, and I'll kind of go out on a limb, because I know I've been kind of hard to reach the last couple of weeks, and I appreciate your raised patience, but I had mentioned something to our attorney and to the manager as well, you know, once we take the vote on the land use plan, and if it's adopted, you know, and all three bodies agree, my feeling is that maybe we would do some type of a workshop or something, maybe even a joint retreat type thing where we go over the land use plan and have some discussion as we start into the UDOs. I'm just throwing that out there, we don't have to decide tonight, but just to start considering that. Because I like, as I mentioned to Ms. Parrish, you know, we would have to bring other folks in to speak on specific things like airports and oil and gas and that kind of thing, and rather than them have to report to three different bodies if somehow, you know, at least give the opportunity for us to have a joint-type education or...
Discussion.
Well, and just so we all hear the same information at the same time, and I think that might help our staff lots if they're not having to go to multiple meetings and bring these people in multiple times, just a thought to consider.
What type of timeline are we under with the land use plan?
Well, we can't really get moving on the UDO until the land use plan is adopted, because there are some general guidelines in there that would guide the decisions of the UDO.
You shouldn't adopt this until we understand it.
And so what's important to the UDO is we still have a moratorium in place for the oil and gas, and, you know, we really, you know, are running on time for the moratorium. And, you know, we really, you know, are running on time for the moratorium. I don't have the exact dates of when it runs out, but we have some issues where we need to address that. And then, you know, whatever we need to put permanently in place in the UDO, we need to do that and get the moratorium behind us. So, you know, I would, I would hope that we could adopt at the latest sometime in December the land use plan.
Any questions?
I'll continue to talk for myself.
Sure.
But for example, and I understand the strategic planning and planning in advance and all these different opportunities we have before us, but just like we're sitting here tonight, at least I'm still of the opinion, we agreed on a, on a, what is that, transportation going down the Broadway with a four lane years ago. Subsequently, we decided to build over at Community College. We spent twenty-three million dollars.
Right.
We actually need a road over there.
Priorities have changed.
And we've locked in to something down that happened ten years ago, maybe. So those are the kinds of things. Go ahead, Tim.
No, I just, I don't think that we're locking ourselves in with the land use plan by proven or whatever. I think that if we saw an issue with the land use plan next year, we could amend it or correct it at any time that we see fit.
Those are the kind of rules that need to be presented on the front end, not the back end, not after we approve something. We need to know what the game plan is going to be before we start locking in.
Well, I don't, I agree with Commissioner Sloan that the, the land use plan is, you know, like when the last land use was planned, land use plan was adopted, it was called the 2020 Plan, because the idea was is that we were going to, you know, this is what would guide us to the year 2020. Well, this plan isn't named that, and it's not named, you know, out to 2030 or 2040 for that very purpose, because we see that the community, it's like at the, the public policy luncheon today, you know, if we're sitting here saying, well, the county's going to grow, well, the county is already growing, and we're going to have to make changes on the fly. And that's why the land use plan is written the way it is now, so that if we need to make changes, we can make changes as we're going along.
And more specifically, I should add, I think we touched on this at the public hearing, but make sure to reinforce to that point, one of the things we're incorporating is we're going to put in a process where every year we do an annual report and update to this board and all three boards, and using Joint Planning Commission first and then going forward from there. And then every five years, at a minimum, we're going to do it to where we do a major review of the plan to that point, so that to hit all those things that you're talking about, so that it doesn't sit on the shelf and we don't do anything with it for 20 years. Because, Mr. Reeves, to your point, when DOT is looking at our plan, if it's 20 years old and dated, they don't have any guidance when they're trying to make their decisions. So as long as we keep our land use plan active, not only for DOT, but for grants, for all kinds of things that we interact with in terms of trying to get federal and state money, it's really huge that we keep that plan up to date.
Well, it's just like in the first paragraph it says, for the next 20 to 30 years. Okay, I'm just telling you what I'm reading right here.
Sure, sure.
But my point is this, let's get the, let's get the consideration that you're talking about every year out front, so that the public will understand we're not locking ourselves in on one specific idea, so that people that own property that choose to do something different with their property later on will have a way to perhaps provide input.
Sure.
To this body at the right time.
What I'm hearing, I think, is even if we approve the land use plan, we will have the ability to review it every year if we want to and amend it if we need to.
Well, it needs to be.
If we need to.
Yeah. In other words, what we'd like to do is provide you all kind of an analysis of, you know, if you made decisions, whether it's you, the city of Sanford or Town of Broadway, you know, where did we deviate from the plan? Where did things match with the plan? And if it deviates, was it because the plan was wrong and the market shifted? Or was it because this board made a policy decision that, you know, maybe in cooperation with the city, where all of a sudden now we want to put sewer in an area that's a higher growth area that wasn't targeted originally? Or maybe there's an area that we actually want to be con, conserve for agriculture that maybe was targeted for growth. So, I mean, you know, it can work the other way.
How many agencies had input into this land use plan?
Oh, gosh. Well, we did two days' worth of stakeholder meetings, and there were probably 50 or more. I mean, it's pretty much all the local.
And when I'm interested into the Department of Transportation, have a lot of input.
DOT, yes, to some degree. I mean, we brought in Brandon and his group, the local guys, but you have to remember, of course, with DOT, it's really more of us creating our land use plan helps them in terms of the STI and the scoring and things like that.
I remember what I heard when I brought up the tramway area. It reminded me that they had very little input when that was put on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And that's, the whole DOT process is a whole nother animal, but yeah, I mean, in terms of the land use plan, we certainly accounted for the STI and the scoring process to deal with some of the things like you were talking about, so that we know when we keep our plan updated and we're going forward, we're looking at those land use issues if it's around the community college or it's another part of our community. When DOT is trying to score those projects, they'll have better guidance on understanding what's happening in our community.
But, but to Commissioner Odom's point, I hear what's being said, and I've been here when things were supposed, we were supposed to be kept abreast of things going on and didn't get it until after the fact.
Right, right.
Well, I, I have, you know, maybe a little bit more confidence, but, you know, Commissioner Sloan and I have been in the meetings, you know, these exact, you know, points have been made at the Joint Planning Commissions, you know, that over, over the, gosh, we've been doing this two years now, you know, at multiple meetings. Those were the concerns, were that, you know, we wanted something that was flexible, that we could, as the manager said, you sort of change in the fly if we need to, because, you know, we know that Chatham Park is going to be a big impact on Lee County, but we're not sure exactly how. You know, if the mega site were to get a company, huge impact, but we're not exactly sure how. And, and those were, you know, lots of the discussions that, that we had in the Joint Planning Commission meetings, you know, yes, those impact traffic, just like you were talking about, you know. What we see as determining factors now in November 2018 may look ridiculous five years from now, you know.
Or next year.
Or next year, exactly.
Is maybe part of the adoption, we just put in a date for annual review will be done on July first.
That's what I was looking for, the language to be upfront, so that we're clear on how it's going to be handled.
And, and, and I think that's, that's a good point, is just, you know, that, that we need to, to put that in stone, much like a contract, you know, with something else. Okay, we're going to do our annual review this month, you know, for the Joint Planning Commission to report to the three governing bodies and, and then have a public hearing for the Joint Planning Commission, you know, people can come maybe and, and voice their concerns. That's, I like this plan much better than our older ones, because it gives us that flexibility, and it also gives us that accountability, that we have to look at this every year. You know, it's not maybe, or we'll try to, or we'll get around to it, you know, we have to. But to your point, Commissioner Reeves, I think that's, you know, putting, putting a date on there and, and holding our feet to the fire, that yes, we're going to do this every year.
That, that's all I'm looking for, because the average person does not work in this every day.
I understand, absolutely, absolutely. And I think some of us have looked at it too much, just kind of, I, I understand your point completely. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments or anything?
Just realized that the real work is ahead of us with the UDO.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So this is not something that's going to go by the wayside.
This is setting the blueprint, and then the UDO is what really determines how things are physically built.
I, I had to explain to a young person that was doing a report, and they were asking me about land use plans. And I said, it's kind of like the land use plan is the constitution and the UDO is the Bill of Rights, you know, I mean, it's, you've got the overarching ideas.
It's a good analogy.
And then you've got the rules, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marshall. We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call on Mr. John Payne, and been waiting a while for this and apologize for the delay, but, golly, you know, not one but two hurricanes and everything else. Oh, this will be a year to remember for sure, but we'd like to welcome Witherspoon-Ravenell here, representatives.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We have Gary Warner and Bob Swickler here with Witherspoon-Ravenell.
Okay.
And they'll be making the presentation. And included in your packet was, I think, the recommended Phase One approach and the values attached to each of them.
Okay.
Chris Warner will get us going.
All right, great. Thank you, John. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Again, my name is Gary Warner with Witherspoon-Ravenell. Bob Swickler is actually with RMC Architecture. He's here to potentially answer any questions you may have on architecture, as, as it may or may not come up. We have a very, very brief presentation. We have been asked to master plan, essentially, thank you, John, essentially remaster plan for existing parks. We're going to talk about those, we're going to talk about our process, where we are in the whole scheme of things, and then talk about some budget numbers. The four parks that we've been asked to, to look at were Temple Park, OT Sloan Park, Kiwanis Children's Park, and Horton Park, a nice arrangement around, around the, the community. There's a whole series of tasks that are part of our, part of our work effort with, with the county. We've been through a lot of these already. We are here tonight to talk about the Commissioner's presentation, which is tonight. We've done conceptual design. We spent a lot of time with staff trying to figure out what the big ideas are for these four existing parks. We had an open house where we presented ideas, and I think several of you were in attendance. It was pretty well-attended. We've been working on a, on a report, which will come at the end, so we have a draft version right now. The Parks Recreation Department has a draft version. And then we're trying to figure out how we implement this over time within, working within the budgets that the county has laid out and make sure that we can build these things appropriately and stage it for future, for future efforts as well. So the first one we'll talk about is Horton Park. Horton Park has, and its place right now is a softball field, a couple basketball courts, the pool house, I can get my laser pointer to work, the old pool is right here, which I think the pool's been closed for some time. There's a pool house and a pump house for, for that is, is there. Gravel parking, there's this, this is the old pool house, there's a couple picnic pavilions out there, great-sized picnic pavilions for group efforts, an old playground that has had some, some newer play, piece of play equipment added. So the idea is like, how do we repurpose this pool area into a splash pad, essentially? It's one of the things that was on the wish list. So the image on the, on the left is existing, and the image on the right is the proposed plan. The softball field remains, the pool house remains, and the concession building remains, but they get kind of repurposed. Working with, with Bob doing the architecture, he's kind of gone through and developed footprints for these, for these facilities. The playground gets upgraded with some newer equipment. One of the bigger, big changes here is that, you know, the splash pad is now here, which would be a little easier to operate than a pool. Insurance requirements are lower, operation costs are lower, those kind of things. But we also have two structured parking areas now. Before, we just had one gravel parking area. So now we have structured parking, paved parking, now we have approved ADA access across, across the park, getting from the parking area to the basketball courts to get to the splash pad. The splash pad would have a pool house with restrooms and those kind of things, because the concession building would be renovated, so we have a small little office and storage space, and our restrooms is there as well. The walk, there's a walking trail that circulates through the park, and eventually the path connects down the hill, across the creek, to the community garden that's, that's in the neighborhood there. So it starts to really connect the park to the, to the surrounding neighborhood.
That walking trail, you're talking about adding that, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
It's not there now.
I know it ain't.
It's not there now. There is a, there is a path wandered through there, but it's.
Yeah, the budget path.
Not exactly much of a path.
Right.
No. So look, we're working, working within the budget parameters, the image on the left now is now what we propose to be Phase One, which Phase One would essentially be the splash pad, a new parking area, of course, you have a pump house, and then a piece of the loop trail that eventually gets down to the community garden.
All right, let me stop you there, because this splash pad is different than the splash pad that's proposed for Kiwanis Park.
Correct.
Okay, so which one is to go in first? And I have a reason for asking. Do you know?
Well, it would depend on if we approve our, you know, Phase One and authorize them to begin develop construction drawings and get things out to bid. The city's already out to bid, and they announced today that they have awarded their contract.
For the splash pad?
Yes.
Good. Which raises a question in my mind, why start on another splash pad if you got one under construction instead of perhaps doing the baseball diamond or something else?
This is more of a neighborhood splash pad.
Correct.
Quite a bit different than the splash pad, the mega, I call that the mega pad.
Right. There are, there are citizens in every community who can't necessarily make the trip across town to a, that splash pad or this splash pad or that tennis court.
The same ones haven't been able to swim for quite a few years.
How many communities have two splash pads our size?
A lot, actually. Yes, a lot. Now, I'm relatively new to North Carolina, but we're, after working, you know, eight years in Georgia and 20 years in Florida, there's, there are communities this size that have three splash pads or four splash pads. And there are different sizes, they're themed different ways.
Right.
You know, so that, you know, a kid may like this splash pad, or someone with, with an accessibility issue may like that splash pad. So sometimes they serve, you know, different, different storylines, different ideas, different, different populations.
And technically, the city's depot park is a splash pad.
Correct, yeah.
Well, I, I won't linger on it. I still have concerns about dual projects as opposed to different projects at different times. That's the consideration I would offer. But go ahead with your presentation.
All right. So, you know, with the splash pad, with the, with the walking trail, renovation to, to the, the pool house and restrooms and things like that, the Phase One cost is just over $500,000 for this. It's, you know, design, permitting, construction.
What, what is the pink on the, on the right-hand slide?
This?
Yes.
The purple?
Purple, okay.
That's just, well, pink, purple, that's just, that's the surfacing of the playground.
Okay, okay.
So it, it could be that color, it could be design. We like to do multi-color designs into our playgrounds.
Sure, sure, okay.
Depending on what, what the story may be or what the theme might be.
In your Phase One, do you have a paved parking lot?
Yes, sir. Yeah, partially, a paved parking lot right there. It's not as big as the gravel park that's here, but it will provide handicap access to the splash pad, to the basketball courts, which you don't have now.
That splash pad is going to be located where?
About where the, about where the existing pool is. So the idea is that we can renovate the pool house, keep the showers, keep the rooms, possibly utilize the pump system. Well, that jury's still out on that one. But essentially, it's going to be located where the pool is right now.
Which we put it on the wooded side of the.
Correct.
Park.
Correct. Which is one of the beauties of the splash pad. You can go out and hose the leaves off the splash pad or blow the leaves off the splash pad as opposed to scooping them out of the pool.
I get the splash pad idea. I'm talking about the location specifically. That's going to require landscaping and renovating back there.
It won't necessarily require landscaping, and, and the area for the splash pad is, if it's going where the pool is, it's already flat.
Yeah.
So, and the piping, pipe's already there for the pool, so, you know, we may have, we have to, why put a fence around it, just like we do for a pool? So the fence will be new as well.
All right.
Okay? $500,000, just over $500,000 for that. Next one is Temple Park. Temple Park has some history to it. Currently, there are two softball fields there, there's a gravel parking area, there's no sidewalk on the perimeter of, of the park. There's, there's an old concession restroom building that's, that's starting to see some age. There is some pipe failure on this project as well. There's, there's a drain pipe that's starting to collapse here. There's an outfall, which is this piece right here. There's an outfall here that's starting to deteriorate that needs to be upgraded and, and repaired. The softball fields, the dugouts are starting to see, the dugouts and scoring stands are starting to see some age. We've had a long discussion about if this is still being used actively, and it is still being used actively, but there is a story of the spinners that, that are associated with this park. So now the, the proposed program is that we are keeping. So now, the proposed program is that we're keeping one of the softball fields, we're creating an open play area that can be used for a variety of uses. Dog, ball throw, running with the dog, frisbee toss, pickup soccer, pickup football, you know, church picnics or whatever. We're going to organize the parking, and again, provide a restrooms slash storage building slash group pavilion that can be used for a variety of groups. A couple smaller picnic pavilions are located around the park, again, a brand-new playground, which is not in place there now, and two half-basketball courts out there. This area right here where...
Where's the basketball court?
Pardon me?
Where are the basketball?
Right, one right here and one right here, two of them.
Yeah.
Two half courts. This plaza right here is now the, as you're standing at the light, right there at the intersection, you look across, you will look across, right now you look across into the back of the backstops and dugouts. So we're going to take that away, make the open space there, so you look across the open space with a nice plaza there, and we figure it'd be some sort of public art piece or a monument piece to the spinners right there, to help tell that story of Temple Park, you know. So now, we're also proposing a walking path all the way around for the community, and there's an additional parking area on the south side of the project, just along the street there, some angled parking. Looking at Phase One, essentially, would we take out the dilapidated structures, we would, you know, take out all the softball fields, the fencing, those kind of things, right now make it an open space with part of the walking area, and the cost for this is just under $200,000. Just under $200,000 to do that. The big cost for this is repairing the pipe down here, the outfall, and then doing the demolition work and regrading to get the structures that are starting to see some age.
How much parking is going to be available?
Pardon me? How much parking right there?
Parking.
Parking right there, I can't remember off the top of my head, I think I had a number up there, but it looks like probably, I guess between 20 or 30 spaces right there, and there's another 10 or 12 along the road. We figure with the open space, with the basketball courts, the playground, we have to need to provide some more structured parking, organized parking. All right? Next project, Kiwanis Children's Park, as opposed to Kiwanis Park. Kiwanis Children's Park. Couple tennis courts, actually, four tennis courts there now, a playground with a sand base, a sand and mulch base, some parking. There's a group pavilion down here at the bottom of the hill, in the slope, and there's a creek runs through right there that is exposed. This is the restroom building that's there, it's one facility for on each side, old, an old swing set that we have yet to see anybody use, but it's still there. Swing is, swinging is still a very popular sport, activity, you know, so. One of the challenges with this, here's, again, here's the existing image on the left, master plan on the right. One of the challenges we had to work with this is a couple things. One is the Wicker Street Greenway that is coming through by the town of Sanford, and also the future expansion of this by DOT, what that needs to be. So we kind of designed the park to allow the future DOT expansion to occur without impacting the park, and to allow for the Wicker Street Greenway to come through the park as well, you know, without impacting the park. So we've taken the two tennis courts, and we've kind of reoriented them, kind of cleaned them up, resurfaced them. We have striped them for pickleball in addition to tennis, which is a fast-growing local sport. New sidewalks all the way around, you know, the parking is essentially the same, a new group pavilion slash restroom, storage building here, a couple smaller group, you know, smaller picnic pavilions there, kind of cleaned up the creek a little bit, and then have a brand-new playground with new equipment, and then a small area for what we term nature play, which is, you know, playing with stumps and rocks and sticks, which is all the stuff we used to play with growing up as kids, but now it's coming back as a structured thing, you know, so. But it's just an opportunity to let kids explore a little bit more out there. Working with Phase One, we would take out one of the tennis courts, resurface this one, you know, enhance the parking, stripe it for pickleball, and provide access and handicap accessibility to a new playground there. And that was, this still allows for DOT to come through and do their thing, for the town of Sanford to come through and do their greenway project, and the cost for this one is just under $400,000.
You take it out, one's up to the tennis courts, is that it?
Yes, yes, for this phase.
For now.
For this phase.
What about the existing parking lot? What are you doing there?
The existing parking lot would essentially just be enhanced. So it's cracked, it's cracked, it needs to be repaved, there's some extra curbing out there that probably needs to go away, you know, needs a bit better drainage, so all the engineering of that would take place.
Does that take in the old JC hut?
There is, yes, sir. There is some space being used from the old JC hut property and the, what was the other building that was there, John?
I see, youth council building.
Youth council building was there, which I think that Optimus or somebody was using for a while.
So, you know, DOT expansion, essentially, you would, you know, come in and, you have a good portion of that corner of the park.
And we still have some issues with losing some of that property and having to basically do a land swap somewhere, and we have not had that resolved with DOT yet and then LWCF.
And that's why I think, you know, doing it this way makes the most sense right now until DOT and the city finishes what they're doing. You don't want to do it and then have to tear something up because they run into a problem.
Right. So with the city coming in and doing the greenway, you know, this, we're thinking this entire piece gets built by the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I want to talk about a little later.
The greenway is going to be on the county's property.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. But it's part of the city's greenway, so.
Yeah.
It's one of those teamwork things.
Right, cooperation.
That's right, exactly.
Joint ventures, right?
Yes, yes.
Finally, OT Sloan Park. This is the largest park that we looked at, has a boys' and girls' club, has a softball field, has a big area of parking and the pool, and the tennis complex, six tennis courts, parking for that, there's the old pro shop building, those kind of there. There are two entrances, there's the entrance coming off with the tennis, and there's another entrance that comes off, you know, off of the road there for these parking areas. So there's also, what you don't see in the aerial is also a dog park, there's also disc golf, you know, through the woods, all that kind of things there. It's starting to show some age again, you know, in some of the pavilions, we have some erosion control issues, you know, we have some wet areas, those kind of things. So we went through some program, one of the programs, the big program for this project was the request for a large community center and gymnastics center. So we now have a 37, 36, 37,000 square foot community center, which we'll talk about in a couple minutes. The boys' club is still here, the pool is here, and we're also talking about putting some sort of retractable cover over the pool for use. The, a couple of big changes aside from the community center is now there's a connected entry drive that circulates through the park, as opposed to coming in one drive, going back out in the street, coming back in the other drive, you know, if you wanted to drive from one end of the park to the other. So now you have a continuous driveway that runs through the park. The challenge with that now is we've had to reconfigure the tennis courts. Instead of six in a row, now you have two banks of three. Reconfigure some, we lost some of the parking here, but we picked up parking here, and now we have a multipurpose field with, designed for soccer, with stadium seating for a couple thousand people potentially, or a few hundred people, however much, however many we want to get. Concession restroom building, again, the community center with an entry drive and parking lot, a playground associated with that, there's a new playground over here associated with the, with the boys' and girls' club, and a continuous loop trail that circulates around the park. Disc golf would be shifted to accommodate, we still have all the disc golf course, but it'd just be, some of the holes would be realigned out there. The dog park remains out there, so actually, we actually have some parking now closer to the dog park than it is right now.
Tell me where the dog park is on there.
Dog park is right in, if I remember correctly, right in this area here, right off.
No, it's on this side.
What, I'm sorry?
It's on this side.
This side.
It's actually by the tennis court.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
Keep coming.
That driveway.
Yeah.
That driveway.
It's right there.
Yeah.
I got an interest in that, you know.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got my driveways confused.
Mr. Warner, do you have any idea the distance of the walking trail all the way around?
I don't know, do not.
No, no, that's fine.
I think when it's all done, we end up with a couple miles.
Well, that's what I was going to say, you know, that, I've had a couple of people ask me, you know, when we've had these meetings and people that couldn't make it, that were interested in, it's such a great location and a large property, would there be enough mileage, you know, with the walking trail to do, you know, Relay for Life type walks and that kind of thing, you know?
We end up with a couple miles, and certainly if you start, for relays, if you start walking on the park drives and those kind of things, it certainly adds up pretty quick.
Okay.
One of the things that we made sure of is that we didn't want to design like a two-mile loop with no way to get out and back, you know?
Right, right.
If you get out there, I only want to do a mile, is there a way to get back without having to run the whole two miles? So there's different ways you can circulate through there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The donated land touch this property?
Yeah, it's on the bottom. You can see where the multipurpose field is.
Yeah.
That's the donated property to the left. So, and then you can see the new driveway, so pretty much the new driveway going straight across and down is the donated property.
Drive into it.
But the...
That is...
So this is where the credit union's one right there?
Yes.
That's credit union.
Right, right, okay, I remember it's credit union or bank. So there's actually building a service driveway to that point.
So it'll be great, you can come in at the stoplight.
It's right to that left, right there.
Okay, that green spot.
Yeah, that green spot, all the way to the railroad, so you would go...
Yeah, go back this way.
Yeah.
But having that driveway coming off that stoplight is great.
And that was one of the reasons that we needed to get the gravel road, because there are, you know, people trying to come out of the gravel road and go left there. We've had some accidents there, so it's better that we eliminate that ingress and egress right there and then use that light as the main entrance into the park.
So much safer.
So, we want to talk a little bit about the Recreation Community Center here, gymnastics center, right there. RMC Architecture worked with, they came up with four or five concepts, in terms of floor space and floor plans and space allocations, facades, roof lines, all that kind of good things. So this is where, you know, Bob and his team have landed with this concept. One of the things that we like about this concept, as you can see, is a very strong ground presence as you approach this building. And if I could back up for just a sec, as you come in this drive right here, you have a nice clear view of this great community center, this great gymnastics and center, the recreation center there. So it's got a very strong ground presence, very recognizable as kind of an iconic piece of architecture for the park, you know, with its glass front, you know, the high canopy. You end up with a really nice plaza space there for special events, food trucks, whatever, you know, for those kind of things, for that. So, I'm sorry, I thought I had a floor plan in here, but, okay, so this is Phase One out here. Phase One essentially takes that road, it continues, you know, it seems it stops right there, but does connect to the old road that's there. So Phase One includes that circulated road that comes off the road there. We work on the realigning the tennis courts, and we clear this area out for a multipurpose field, so we get that position out there. And this cost is about $725,000 for design. The big cost is, of course, the roadway and the infrastructure associated with it. No, well, what doesn't show up here is there's also, the disc golf will be realigned at this point as well, knowing that we have a master plan that, you know, once it's approved and finalized, and we can start to lay out that disc golf situation and position, so we don't have to change it again out there.
When you do the new multipurpose field, will, will there be, is lighting included in that?
Not in Phase One.
Okay.
Not in Phase One.
Okay.
Yeah. The lighting for that kind of field would probably run close to a quarter million bucks. Right, so, future phase.
The road going, additional road, looks like it's going through your tennis court, part of the tennis court.
Yes, right.
What are you going to do?
Well, we still have six courts, so we're saving three, and we have to take out three and build three new ones.
So you're going, you've got building three new ones in the plan?
Right, yes, in Phase One. Yeah, so we still end up with six courts, because there's a high demand for tennis in this park. Of course, they've also been striped for pickleball, so a high demand for pickleball in this court, for this area too.
And see, Doc, the middle schools have been using those because they don't have tennis courts, so.
I built that court.
Really?
I did.
How about that?
And they're in bad need of repair right now.
I would imagine, so they've been there a while.
You did a good job to start with, but we need to work on them.
You did an excellent job. I paid you some.
They still get used, obviously you did a great job, they still get used.
Oh, yeah? Matt's owner played on them a couple of years ago.
You asked me about roller blade hockey, can you use that same surface for roller blade hockey?
For what, I'm sorry?
Roller blade hockey?
For the tennis courts?
Yeah.
You could, sure, yeah, you could. I mean, roller blade hockey tends to take a higher grade of, it takes a slightly different type of sports surface than a tennis, than a tennis court does, and because of the wear from the blades themselves, so, but you could, just, if you start to do that, you just have to realize that you may be resurfacing your striping on your tennis court. Now, if you put a special roller hockey court on it, it plays differently for a tennis. So there's not a universal surface treatment for both of those activities. But if you want to go out there and have a pickup game, you know, with the kids or church group or something like that, it'd be perfectly fine for that. But if you're talking about getting to league competition, that's a different, that's a slightly different, I don't think, and I don't think, it may be, with the three courts side by side there, we could probably get a rink in there for that.
We could talk about that later. Was I going to talk about that later?
So, you know, so the pool's still here, the boys' and girls' club, the softball field, all this remains, the big thing is the connecting entry drive, new tennis courts configuration, and pro shop, and then the open court. So that's it for our presentation. We have to answer any more questions?
Madam Chair, that's a lot to digest, so.
Yes, it is.
We're hoping that, you know, the board would just take that under advisement, and we'll talk about it again in a couple weeks.
Yeah, I think so, because, you know, thank you, Mr. Warner, and thank you. I, we are super excited about getting started on this. This is something that I think all of us on this board probably have gotten as many phone calls on parks and rec improvements as we have on any other issue in the last couple of years. We've got a growing population, and people are starting to realize they need to get out and get fresh air and exercise, and wanting nice places to do that, and as we've seen, you know, we've got a lot of work to do, a lot of our parks are in disrepair and haven't changed much since we were there as youngsters, so.
Quick question.
Sure.
On those, on those, those basketball, can you make basketball courts on the tennis courts too?
You can, you can.
Like all-purpose, when people aren't playing tennis, they can play some basketball in there?
Sure, you could, yeah. So part of the challenge will be, is that if you do that, you'd be best setting up a half-court as opposed to a full-court.
Yeah, most people just do pickup games anyways, not do full courts.
Because the basket configuration doesn't quite line up with tennis courts training.
Yeah.
But if you could do half courts, you know, or just, I mean, half court, just a goal with a three-point circle, everybody wants to shoot three points.
And you also worry about changing the surface of that race.
Correct, correct, yeah, correct, just different striping. But you could stripe one in red and one in yellow.
I'm sure some people don't care about the striping, as long as it's basketball.
That's true, that's true.
Those are the hard stuff.
My kid always wants to know where that three-point line is.
Oh, there we go.
I always want to know where the three-point line is. I always want to know where the three point line is. Everybody wants to be like, you know, Larry Bird, LeBron.
No. That's, that's a great quest, question, Andre. I think, you know, as the manager said, it's, it's a lot to digest and, you know, unfortunately, things cost an awful lot these days. You know, I think everybody up here would love to just do all the parks, you know, completely, but, um, the price tag's pretty heavy. So, that, that's a good idea to, you know, try to make every surface, you know.
One consideration, one consideration would be everywhere we've got more than two tennis courts, you may use one of the six, for example, for the conversion you're talking about.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure the hoop can be outside the fence leaning over.
Right.
And it wouldn't interfere with future tennis. I'm just assuming, but at least more people can access and have fun and play. And exercise.
If, if, it, as we move forward, we need to make things, um, again, back to that word flexible, you know, and multipurpose as we can.
And used.
Yes, absolutely. Well, I think, but based on the attendance at those meetings that we had, I, I think, once we get things spruced up some, um, you know, I mean, we, we actually have families that go to other counties just to use their park facilities, you know.
We'll have the same thing. They'll be coming here.
Yep.
Wanting to get something new.
Right, exactly. Um, but again, that's a good problem to have, bring people into the areas. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here tonight. We apologize again for the delay, but we're, we're excited about this. We're, we're getting ready to rev up here. Okay, um, new business? Didn't really have anything. Um, okay, so we'll go on to our manager's comments.
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple. Uh, the first is, is, um, as we've been setting out our calendar, we, um, forgot, I guess, that we have a conflict in two weeks.
Yes, we do.
Farm City banquet. So, our meeting and the Farm City banquet are at the same time. So, the board needs to decide when they want to meet, um, for the nineteenth, and yes, we do need to meet. As a matter of fact, we may need to meet next week on an economic development matter, so, um, I'm working on that right now with Saga. And, um, we will see if we do need a special meeting to discuss a project. So, anyway, we do need to meet on the nineteenth. I think we're gonna have kind of a lengthy agenda. Um, so, I know this doesn't work well with the folks that work, but, uh, if we were to meet before the meeting, we would need to start probably about three o'clock.
So, um, and, and the manager, and I just realized this this afternoon, um, we've just got a lot going on. Would, would we be able to get everything together, John, to have the items for the nineteenth for next Monday night?
Well, next Monday is Veterans Day.
Oh, that's right, on the twelfth?
I mean, doesn't, wouldn't bother me to meet on Veterans Day, but it might bother some others who have some other plans that they have made. So, um, you know, we would either need to meet on the twelfth or that Tuesday, the thirteenth. And whether we could have everything ready or not, we'd have to let the department heads know they, whatever they got coming, you know, they need to go ahead and get it to us.
Tuesday, the thirteenth, okay. I mean, that's what we just need to discuss and see what's gonna work best for everybody.
Now, you need to first try and figure out how soon you can get everything together and then notify us and give us a, a day or so heads up to make a decision. I think the issue is whether or not you're gonna have everything you need by the thirteenth, for example. I don't know what it is you put it together, but...
I'm looking at the clerk. She has the items.
I even had a notice tomorrow to have everybody that can submit their items to pursue the submitting. I've already received some items for the nineteenth and began putting together the agenda. So, I believe we could get something together by the end of the week, and if we have some add-ons last minute, I'll have those prepared before you that day.
That's, I mean, based on conversations, like she just said, I, I, I think we could have everything by the thirteenth, but that was just dependent on everybody else.
I'm not sure. Will that affect the schedule values?
We do have, um, schedule value. We have our adoption date, it's the nineteenth.
Yeah, and then we have to have so many days after the public...
Yeah, it has to, you have to have so many days between presentation and adoption.
Okay, that's right.
That's why we push it.
That was one thing.
And we have tax conference next week as well.
What about the third? Does it have to be, did we advertise it for the nineteenth?
Mm-hmm, we did. We advertised it the nineteenth, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe this is the thought. Why don't you, if, if you're targeting the nineteenth, why don't we pull it together, the agenda as quickly as possible, send it out to us all? There may be something in there that a commissioner may want to be present for. Or you may look at the agenda and say, I'm okay. It's starting at three o'clock, three thirty, four o'clock. That beats staying here all night trying to figure it out.
Would you, would you be up to...
I'd be here anytime, really.
Would you be up to...
Three, four.
That's why you need to look at it, look at the agenda.
Yeah, let's, 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 we'll get it out to you, okay? Well...
On the nineteenth, are we trying to start at three because of something to do with Farm City or just because we have some...
We're trying to get finished before a quarter to six so that we all can get over to Farm City banquet that starts at six.
Typically, we've, typically, we've waited and had the meeting on the twentieth or the, the next day.
Last year, last year, we had the month.
We went into this Farm City week every year.
Right.
Yeah, we just...
Why is that?
Not every year because the third Monday isn't always the week of Thanksgiving.
The week before Thanksgiving, yes.
Week of Thanksgiving. It's typically the week before.
Right.
But last year and this year, we've had, because of the, where Thanksgiving fell, we've had this conflict now two years in a row.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had it. But again, back to the agenda. If a commissioner sees something on there that is truly important to him or her, we can flag it.
So, let's, let's reserve four o'clock on Monday, the, the nineteenth. If we need to, um, it looks like the agenda is long. We need to meet next week, especially after we need to meet on the economic development matter next week. We'll just advertise a little bit longer agenda and meet.
And then recess it for the nineteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Is that clear? As Monday, everybody else?
We actually have to adjourn and, and come back because of the, because of the, the approval of the schedule values.
Right. Okay. All right. Okay, sir, any?
Yes, ma'am.
No, 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 no. I mean, so, Mon- Monday, November the twelfth, potentially, at six o'clock. And then we would recess until Monday.
We would meet again on the nineteenth.
November nineteenth at four o'clock. Yeah.
And the, and the twelfth is centered around or based on economic development?
Oh, that's right. You said Tuesday, the thirteenth would be better for you.
Tuesday, the thirteenth would be better.
Okay, yes, sorry.
Okay, Tuesday, the thirteenth.
But it's about economic development.
But we will, we, we will circle back around with everybody to a free thing. Maybe by Wednesday, we can have a handle on things, Thursday, Wednesday. Thursday, okay.
Still going to the six.
Or push hard.
Yeah, yeah.
At six on the sixteenth, I mean, the fifteenth.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We'll have him seeing the tenth here and maybe he'll keep...
Yeah, it's okay. We'll get there.
Sorry.
No, it's, again, it's kind of good problems to have.
Give us another little more time, we'll be here. On the thirteenth, well, the thirteenth.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I, I've been approached by the city manager, um, about the Golden Leaf Grant match that we had for the sewer line, which was $200,000. The city would like for us to allow that, to use that 200,000 instead of for the sewer line, which they would cover themselves on the match. To allow them to use the money for a match on the pedestrian facilities and the Carthage Street improvements, basically what we were talking about earlier. The roundabout and then the sidewalks, multi-use path and right-of-way that would go down to the hospital from there.
Okay.
Okay? And their match is $199,000 with the DOT to do that project. So, I told the city manager that I would discuss that with the board. I didn't really see any issue with transferring from one project to another that they were doing. They obviously can't do that because if we give it to them specifically for the sewer project, that goes into the water and sewer fund and they can't transfer that back to the general fund. So, I told them that we would discuss it if the board was comfortable.
What happens with the water sewer stuff?
They are going to cover that with water and sewer fund balance that they have.
So, it's spelled out in the Golden Leaf Grant Fund that we were providing a match?
It didn't, it just said city and county together, so it doesn't matter whether it's our money, their money on the, on that match.
Yeah, it's Golden Leaf money.
So, this would be, you know, we would be allowing them to just transfer the money to a different project. We're gonna have to vote on it on the nineteenth anyway because I have to move it out of the airport fund into, um, the community development fund.
So, is the roundabout a done deal?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it's under.
Have you all seen it? I haven't.
I, I, I...
I'm looking at my first.
I have.
This is part, this is part of his baby. I can tell you that. He's, he's involved in this baby.
Yeah, because it's taking out the gas station, isn't it?
No, he's not taking it out completely.
I thought there was an issue with the pumps being too close, so...
They're, yeah.
It'll be a...
They're working on the final designs to answer your question. So, they have come back to us with these cost estimates and the, what's happened is the city has to make the pledge to match the 20%. So, anytime you're doing sidewalks on both sides and multipurpose and all that, before they released the final design to us, they wanted that financial commitment upfront that the city would pay.
How many have seen the preliminary?
Yeah, I...
You have seen the preliminaries.
Who hasn't?
I think we've provided to you and Pecat.
How long ago was that been? How long ago?
This project started in 2016ish.
Yeah, probably...
You think I'm a preliminary from 2016? Give me a break.
But this, this goes all the way from Wicker, Carthage, Wicker and Carthage, all the way down to Fire Tower Road.
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you, did I hear you mention right-of-way purchase?
It's, it said in the list here that bike lanes, sidewalks, multi-use path and right-of-way.
There's additional right-of-way required because the city's asking for the sidewalks and the bike paths and those kind of things. So, DOT is, will, will provide and cover what would be normally there, but because the city's asking for the additional, if there's additional right-of-way, it has to be acquired. Not much, but...
Right. Was Bob Bedwell here then?
I'm sure he probably was when it was discussed originally.
That's how long it's been.
Probably so.
You're, you're actually right.
I know I'm right.
Because it actually, it actually connects to the greenway that goes behind all of that.
Because it was...
And that was discussed here with Bob.
It was part of the communities, like the educational community, the medical community.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, that's when I first saw it.
I carved out a place in my memory to hold on to that. Yeah, they're really funny.
If the board's okay with it, we're gonna present a budget amendment on the nineteenth to move the funds and be able to get the funds to the city.
Do you need a motion specifically?
It would be great if I got a motion to approve.
So, moved. I don't know enough about it anyway.
Okay, any more questions or discussion? I will make one comment. You know, I, I have had to travel quite a bit here lately and, um, I, I don't, I, I understand from the DOT's point of view, their explanations to me. And I know they get tired of it about the common sense and the safety about roundabouts, but they make me crazy in certain places because none of them are the same, none of them work the same.
Well, some places they don't work.
Well, that's true. And there's different rules for all of them. So, when I found about, out about the roundabouts on Hawkins, you know, but, but they do seem to help now that everybody's getting used to them, so, um... Yes, um, whatever, okay. So, we've got a motion on the floor. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, me. All right. Um, okay, Commissioner's comments. Start with Mr. Dodson.
I appreciate everybody coming tonight and hopefully the weather will hold out for tomorrow voting.
Okay, sure.
As well as tell staff over there. Thank you. And, uh, that's all I have.
Okay. You go back, it's okay.
Well, mine's gonna take a minute. We have, and we have had a traffic problem out at Tranway Elementary School.
Yes.
In the last couple of weeks, I've talked with highway commissioner, local division engineer, and some of our local political leaders. And I also discussed it with one of the school board members, but we have a problem out there. It's a dangerous problem. Uh, it needs fixing. I started talking about it in 2008 and this same situation out there now that we had then. Traffic's backing up into US one. I met a school bus head-on the other day out there. Local officer there trying to direct traffic and he looked at me and he said, "Three lanes of traffic on a two-lane road." I said, "I feel sorry for you, my friend. You gotta hand, your hands full." And, I mean, it's just, it's a dangerous situation and we need to stay on it until we get something done out there. They have, and I've been told something is gonna happen out there. They are going to work on it and try to get something done. But we need to before we have a fatality out there. Uh, we have all those people lined up trying to get their children to school and I don't want this thing to fall through the cracks. I'll know after tomorrow how hard I am gonna pursue it because I'm gonna stay with it. I can tell you that till we get something done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sloan?
So, I also would like to thank staff for a card similar to Dr. Connect. We're gonna thank you for coming and, uh, go vote.
Sure. Yeah.
This is the gift you get if you vote. If you vote. Don't be bullied and made to feel ashamed for standing up for what's right and what you believe in. Go vote, please. And thank you for all the support I've had over the years.
Okay. Well, I, you know, um, one of the things I'm just really proud of in this county is, um, I, I don't know the exact number, but, um, I saw a tweet, I think, on Saturday evening that over 12,500 Lee County citizens had already voted, um, at, at the close of early voting. And, and I'll tell you, you know, I've, I've been following politics a long time from the time, these, these young people here sitting on the front row. I, I, I remember sitting in meetings like this when I was your age and, um, it, it bothers me when we have 10 and 14% turnout. Uh, it's a shame. So, to, to see that many people in Lee County that have already exercised their right to vote, which is so precious. And so many people across this world would, would love to have the freedom that we have to do that without fear of, um, violence or, um, being ostracized in their community. So, um, thank you to our citizens that have voted and to those like me that like to wait to the official day. Please, please go out and, and vote and, um, and, and be thankful that we have that right in this country. So, it's been an interesting meeting tonight. We've got a lot of things going on. And, um, after, after tomorrow, just be kind, be humble and be proud to be Americans, no matter how things turn out. And I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
A race.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.